Well, we have a forum. We are down one. Brandon Miller has notified me that he has scheduling time for this evening. We are properly noticed this evening, statute nineteen point eight four two. And I thank Kate Moore. With that, we're going to. We're going to roll into the superintendent's report.
Yes, and I actually have a visitor here. So as I'm handing off the clicker, I'd like to introduce Robin Lakey. She's with the, actually, I think your senior vice president. I don't remember your division of the Waukesha County Business Alliance. And I'd like to just preface her presentation by saying, as all of you know at Arrowhead, our mission is about student success, but not just during high school. It's about preparing kids for whatever their future might hold. And so we've been partnering for years with the Waukesha County Business Alliance to help our students and for, to help our educators through learning through these partner businesses. And ultimately, we want to help our community. If we can turn out students who are prepared and skilled for the jobs that are required or that are needing them, that helps our community and helps our students. And so being a newer board, Robin and I work together and Sue Cassado works with. We know all the behind the scenes that goes on with this program, but many of you do not. So we thought it was perfect timing to learn more about it. Yes. Absolutely. And this.
Good evening, Arrowhead Union High School School District Board members and community members behind me and educators in the room. As Laura alluded to, my name is Robin Lakey. I'm senior vice president of Strategic Initiatives and Workforce for the Waukesha County Business Alliance. Laura is passing out a packet that's got some information in it for our school board members, and I'd be happy to supply one if needed for the board minutes as well. In the left side of your pocket is a copy of this presentation, so if you want to make notes, please feel free to pull that out. And then I'll go through the items on the right side at the end. All right, so let's get started. I'd also like to start saying I'm an Arrowhead alumni and a proud parent of a sophomore and assume to be freshman in a couple of years. Okay, moving on. You can put that in a minute. The Waukesha County Business Alliance is essentially the countywide Chamber of Commerce. So we are the second largest business association in this state. We represent just about twelve hundred different member organizations, mostly businesses, but we do also work with nonprofits and school districts and our higher education institutions. As you can see in the presentation, we drive economic growth in the county. And we do that by making Waukesha County the best place to do business. About ten years ago or so, manufacturers in Waukesha County came to the Business Alliance and said, we have a real problem. The problem is, is we have a skills gap. We have students not willing to work, not able to work. They can't lift anything. They don't show up by time. They don't have the basic math skills that are needed. They simply don't have any employability skills. And we thought, what are we going to do? And as we started having conversations, not just with manufacturers, we started having conversations with healthcare institutions, construction companies, professional services, retail. And they all kind of pretty much said the same thing. And so we needed to find a way to approach the skills gap at that time. And it was really changing the perception that you're after higher education or after high school, you are ready to work. And we started working hard with our K through twelves here in the county as well as our businesses. And that then blossomed what we like to call really a robust workforce development strategy. You can see in the presentation, we really work hard here to pool businesses together with educational leaders, like the ones here, as well as public officials and our community to really drive ways to develop, attract, and retain the talent. It's no secret workforce is the number one issue affecting the economy today. It's not just here in our county. It's not just regionally, it's nationwide. So it's imperative that we have real metrics and ability and programming to work with educational institutions like yourself. Tonight, I'm going to talk a lot about that developed tenant. I would say it's probably the most robust tenant in the state. Waukesha County has been forging forwards for about ten years, or actually about twelve years or so, on those connections. Our programming has now been a statewide effort, and we're going to get into that. But really, it's because we listen to the business community. And we do what Laura said. We find ways to connect the business community to the educational institutions. And sometimes there's not a direct ROI, but there's definitely going to be some collaboration that's going to happen to better place your students in the careers that are needed. This starts with one of our education steering councils. We've had Arrowhead be there before. It's about a forty-person member council that's made up of business, education, nonprofit, county public officials, and regional organizations. They come together about quarterly or so to develop programming, which we'll get into. Initiatives. We talk about employability skills. We discuss the metrics. We have a good understanding. What should we be working with Carroll University on? What should we be talking to WCTC about? That better helps programming set forth. For instance, construction management was not something on the radar of WCTC because of the steering council, the work of K through twelve. It's now a robust program. It's third year. That's sort of a cock drop, so. Probably a knee drop. All right, so I talked a little bit about the programming that's offered. That's where we're going to get into the nitty gritty, the best stuff from the presentation. I would like to say that we offer industry tours. What does that mean? So we offer an opportunity to take high school students and now middle school students inside the doors of manufacturers, seen that season pictures, some of Arrowhead students, into the doors of manufacturers, healthcare institutions, professional services. We show up to your high school with a coach bus. My team deploys with your team and these students to go behind the scenes to try on experiences. They visit WCTC or possibly Carroll or Marquette, MSOE, wherever the K through twelve is interested in and tempted. I want to tell you, Arrowhead was the first tour ever in two thousand eleven. It took forty students. And because Arrowhead stepped up and said, we are willing to be there for this problem. We want to make it better. The rest of the high schools were like, if Arrowhead's doing it, we've got to do it. So thank you, Arrowhead, because it's a robust program. And as you can see, over ten years, now obviously there was a disruption. So the data is a little off because twenty twenty didn't run down, and so twenty twenty-one were about five thousand students. This year will end at about fifty-two hundred students. Our expos are another program. We really believe in finding ways to connect students to career pathways. It's not just about the connection with the business community, hearing somebody give you a presentation about what it looks like to have this career, how much you can make. The students need hands-on opportunities. And that's what our expos are. We offer one in healthcare. There's one coming up that we'll talk about. We offer one in the trades where we bring together construction and manufacturing. And then we offer one in business. Why the business? It's important for these students to understand financial literacy. It's important for them to understand entrepreneurship. It's important for them to be fiscally responsible for their teams, work together, have a sense of understanding what it's like to run a company. Arrowhead is participating to all of us. Laura talked a little bit about how educators are involved. We have a program called Careers Uncovered. It's fantastic for the business leaders to be able to step up and be in front of your students. What's even better is the chance to connect with your educators. Careers Uncovered allows the businesses to open their doors and let educators come inside. So for instance, on March sixteenth, Brenda King, one of your educators, will be going to three pillars. She'll have a chance to be behind the scenes, understand the leadership, what it means to run three pillars. What are they looking for? Everything from marketing to accounting to RN services, hospitality services. How can Arrowhead plug in the three pillars? How can we get our students to three pillars? She'll have a chance to spend quite some quality time with them. Another one on the presentation is our superintendent present roundtable. That's an opportunity for the administration of your school to come in and have a closed-door conversation with the business. And when I say closed door, I don't allow the other members to come in. It's just that business. It's a chance for that business to open their books and to be honest and say, here are some real concerns that I have. Here's what I really need K through twelve to support us with. Here's what I need higher education to help us with. And you know what? Sometimes these businesses don't know what they don't know. And so the collaboration between the administration and the business community is the reason, I think, these partnerships continue. Arrowhead has always had administration that goes. Thank you for that. Let's talk about Arrowhead. Your students have gone through, three hundred and fifty or more students have gone through Schools for Skills, which is our manufacturing, our healthcare tours. So on April sixth, we will show up with a coach bus here at South Campus. It will take about forty students. If you look on the right side of your folder, the first flyer that's there gives you an idea of where your students are going. We have set up a tour for them to go to Milwaukee Tool. They'll be at the R and B Center. They'll be doing hands-on tool development. So they'll get to see what it's like to create a product and get a product all the way to market. From there, they're going to go to WCTC. They're going to have a chance to go through the welding department, the automotive department, and the EMS department. And then they will go to GE Healthcare. GE just did a rebrand, so this is going to be a chance for them to see AI technology that's finest. You can see on the back of the full day, it's an eight-to-day. So your students are gone most of the day. They are with your educators and with our staff. There is an opportunity for them to take information home with them to learn about what are the next steps. These two companies will be interested in students being placed there at some point. Industry expos. Throughout your, that right side, I think they might be the last three flyers you'll see are upcoming expos. All of your educators that we work with do get these. I've had the chance to work with Sue and her team quite a bit. So they know about the opportunities that are available in healthcare coming up in May. The business one that's coming up in March. And then the experience, the trades, which is that last page in your packet. Just to give you a highlight of that, last year that had over twenty-five hundred students come through the door from all over Waukesha County. This work is now being bridged outside of Waukesha County, and it's because of the foundation of what our K through twelves have done to bring this forefront this week. Careers Uncovered is coming up. I already talked about how Brenda King will be there, boots on the ground, representing Arrowhead. In your side panel is also bridging the gap. Arrowhead is served as a panelist. They have been a past panelist to show the best practice of Warhawk manufacturing. That is one of the most unique manufacturing programs in the county. So kudos to all of you. The business community loves the program. They can't get enough of it. They always want to meet Arrowhead and what's happening there. Because of that, it has spawned other conversations with manufacturing. Opportunities allowed for Arrowhead to get in touch and connect with manufacturers to learn about engineering, AI, automation, how we can get those students to the pipeline quicker. You will see on that flyer, all the way to the left under the junior achievement logo, is one of the feeder schools, Merton Intermediate. They will be there talking about how they have been deploying employability skills into their curriculum, which is your achievement, to better fit needs of Warhawk manufacturing and some of the other applications that are being studied here at Arrowhead. If you're interested in attending that, please reach out to me. Be happy to get you registered. Arrowhead is also, as I said, been a part of superintendent roundtables and connecting counselors. That's an opportunity where your counselors here have met with maybe deans of higher education institutions, but there's new programs. Great example, Arrowhead Counselors meeting, I think it was twenty nineteen, to discuss the supply chain management programming that was happening, Carroll and WCTC. It's a chance for the counselors here to get a first look at what are the program requirements, how do students get interested, what are the feeder classes that they should be taking? Are there electives that should be offered at a K through twelve to feed them into that pipeline? That's a program that's on on-demand, so every time a higher education launches something new, the business community thinks it's worthwhile. We get that in front of K through twelve. One in our way. Lastly, I just really want to end the presentation, and I just want to say thank you. I want to say thank you to the administration. Thank you to the educators. It's partnerships like this at Arrowhead, the business community has that really is helping. It's building this talent pipeline. The perception that manufacturing is dark, dirty, and dingy does not exist anymore. The perception that WCTC is not a college doesn't exist anymore. And it's because K through twelve has been working with us hand in hand, like at your Arrowhead, to help transform students' lives by utilizing opportunities in manufacturing. WCTC, plumbing, youth apprenticeship, dual enrollment, Start College Now, AP classes, there's a variety of ways. And these students are better prepared. And we're seeing it every day in the workforce. So I'm here on behalf of the business community to say thank you. And we look forward to partnering. We've got a lot coming up. And it's always nice to have Arrowhead right there. I can always call them if I have a question, but they can call me. They know our team well. We know them well, and it's great to partner. And that's, thank you so much. Thank you.
I just want to thank you and the Business Alliance. It was truly my pleasure in October to be on an outing that was coordinated through the Business Alliance with Tom Wheeler.
Yes.
When all the students visited at Rico's daughter in Sussex IM.
They did.
WCTC. It was a fabulous, fabulous day.
That picture that's all the way, those two pictures are from your tour, so of course I would love to.
And it was highly interactive. The kids were excited. Parents were excited. They really wanted to learn more about the dual enrollment because they saw their children in this lane, and they wanted to learn how to keep them on track. So we appreciate the partnership.
It's fantastic, because I mean, let's be honest, college is an expensive triad, right?
Yeah.
So if we can better prepare our students, it's easier on everyone for their next step. Thank you for attending. You were there with Suzanne, our president.
Yeah.
So it's always nice if any board members are interested, if anybody's interested in that April sixth, you have my contact information. We'd be happy to have you come along. And it's really about, you know, helping us spread the message. All nineteen public school districts participate in our programming. And then we've got Milwaukee, starting, if yes, is looking at our programming, and then Ozaku-Washington, and then Jefferson. So they're all kind of apart. We've got a team that deploys this. We're very involved. Our business community really steps up for all of you. If you ever want to have a conversation one-on-one, happy to have that. Thank you so much.
I would love to reach out at some point and just kind of pick your brain a little bit around just from an industry standpoint. We have been trying to change, change the the young employees, the people that are just starting for the first time, because there's a pretty high turnover rate. They're not used to following the rules. Like exactly what you said, they're not used to being on time, not used to being there every day, not used to leaving this alone and actually being productive. So I'm curious if you've thought through coaching employers on how to be more adaptive, not build all the way to what some of our nineteen, twenty-year-olds may be wanting the workplace to be like, but adapting a little bit so that both are now more successful.
That is a fantastic question. In the strategy, I talked about developing, attracting, which we do a lot from the state, so we spend a lot of time from a state standpoint advocating for dollars, but retaining. And you're talking about retaining. We spend a lot of time on mentorship, so we have other programming besides just this K through twelve programming that supports young professionals coming into their career, which is what you're discussing, as well as ways that we can retain them and then move them through the pipeline, right? Because once you have your careers, that's done. So we need to retain you. We want you to work in Waukesha County. We want you to live in Waukesha County. We want you to play here, right? We know this is the best place to do business. So how do we help employers? We have several different programming, so I'd be happy to chat with you. My cards in there.
That's a, yeah, we'll connect.
Let's connect.
I use a lot of junior apprentices, and we try to mentor them to be ready for the next step, so yeah.
Yeah, let's do that.
I have a question for you. So what additional opportunities might we have at Arrowhead to be groundbreaking with regards to new opportunities that can partner with you?
It's a great one. So AI technology is what I think is on the tip of my tongue, live, to answer your question, and I'm sure I'll get my car, and I'll be like, oh, I shouldn't have said that. AI technology is going to be the next thing to pay attention to. Okay, so we all talked years ago about industry work right on. Warhawk manufacturing is there. You're doing it. Our K through twelves right now are really focused on how do we even know or teach what AI is? And not that chatbot thing, what is that?
Chatbot.
No, we're not talking about that. Like, nobody knows. It may write my speeches. But what our employers are wondering is what are K through twelve going to be teaching so that these students understand problem solving? And that's really going to be the next conversation. So having Arrowhead in the forefront of that, we've all been part of those conversations, Pewaki, so definitely keeping Sue in line on those conversations. Making sure that you always have a connector, right? Someone that we can pull the trigger and call and say, I've got XYZ company, and they're looking for an intern, or they're looking for mentorship. And then vice versa, they want, I think, K through twelve wants to be able to call me and say, hey, I've got some students. Help me play some, right? And we can do that. The other big thing that the business community is talking about, I'll be honest, is literacy. And one of those numbers right now. There's, I think, I think they've been activated by a few things, and they really want to understand how students are retaining information. It's not just about the students being prepared for your workforce. It's about your workforce being prepared for the students. Right? And so right now, we've got four generations in the workforce. That's a lot. And so the oldest generation is not inputting and outputting information the way that the newer generation is. And so literacy is definitely on the top of their mind in regards to that. Those are some off the top of mine. Again, I'll plug it with some. I don't know if that answers your question.
No, that does, and I think we'd all welcome any, any other thoughts when you get to your car and you're on the way home, and you're like, you know, please, please email us as a board, and we have an amazing administration that would piggyback on any of these future opportunities to really give our kids an advantage.
But to that, that point, Chris, I think the way you asked that question, I think, is awesome, because I think we could take this discussion into a future curriculum meeting and just do a brainstorming session. I would love to invite her back. It'd be a part of that, because I think we could map out something to let Arrowhead start first again, and then let down, years down the road, have her schools coffee again, but let us run with it for a while first and be a big competitive advantage.
Yeah, and you know, one of the best things is let me bring in the business community too, not just me, right? If you're ever interested in hosting a business forum, I'll get them here. A lot of your parents are the parents I talk to on a regular basis, representing manufacturing, construction, healthcare. We pool our members together by industries, our high-end demand industries. So I meet with presidents and CEOs, C suites of manufacturing companies and construction companies right now that are leading the region quarterly. They would open, open arms come in, especially after what you've all been through in the last couple of years, where they knew the doors were closed, and they understand why. But they're always willing to come in. So, and we've had the business community in a couple of times in the past, during the pandemic. You've hosted the steering council and some others, but we'd be happy to if there's innovative conversations that you want to have, you know, how about, what does the next five years look like? You know, for manufacturing or some of your career pathways. And you just want to hear from them. It's like kind of a dump. We can do that.
A lot of manufacturers have like a decade and a half age gap.
They do.
Of where, where we should be. And being able to then set up and build a program now that we can prepare graduating seniors to fill that void, and they'll have a ton of opportunity beyond what they even imagine right now. So I think we could get on the forefront of that.
Yeah, thank you, Robin.
You're welcome. Absolutely. Any other questions? Well, again, thank you, and thank you to Laura for your leadership and being a part of the Business Alliance. We recognize as a business leader also in our community, thank you for all you guys for us. Thank you to Sue and your team, Adam, all of you. It's a pleasure working with you. Good night, everyone. Thank you.
With that, we are going to move into the public comment portion of our meeting. I gotta buzz through some of these once again. The communication and comments from members of the public agenda item requires anyone wishing to speak to the board must be present and register and sign a form. A three-minute time limit is enforced. Public comment is only accepted during this agenda item. Sharing admittance with another person addressing the board is not committed. Speakers should address the board as a whole, not individual board members, and should remain polite and respectful. Only the board president may respond to the comments or questions. The board president has the authority to ask another board member or administrator to respond. Board members will not respond to public comments unless designated by the board president. The board president has the authority to cease any conversation at any time for any reason. Public comments will be taken under advisement. If public comments are in regard to an agenda item, when the board discusses that particular item during the meeting, the board may or may not address the comments, questions raised by the public. Only the board will discuss and/or take action. There will be no citizen communications during the time of the agenda topics. And lastly, speakers are not immune from legal consequences related to the content of their speech. With that, we will welcome our our first person up. That's Ryan Gonzalez.
I'm sorry, I did not see the form. Please sign it.
Of course.
So I just wanted to come up here and talk a little bit. When I was at the January meeting, we talked a little bit about bullying. I believe there was someone forced. Her name was Forrest. They came up here and talked a little bit about Arrowhead and its bullying problem and how it is exacerbated for people of the LGBT community. And so just kind of like talk about that. And I think about a certain quote a lot. It's called the drink deep or taste not period scream. Well, it's a quote about the danger of not learning enough by tend to apply it as a general rule of life. I apply it to the things I do. With that said, when it comes to transitioning, I can't really have faith. Following my outspoken advocacy against policy six fifty-one, teachers have asked me if I would like to go by something that is both on my birth certificate and on my given. I always stammer and dodge these questions in these conversations, because I can't help but to think of the negativity surrounding being transgendered. It truly is just too painful to have faith in my gender identity. Because of this, following six fifty-one, I essentially just went back into the closet completely and utterly at school. Growing up in Illinois, I remember my stepfather reprimanded my brother for going to the local high school GSA, because he didn't want him to be, quote, hanging around transvestites and the like, end quote. I remember in grade school, my best friend at the time said that he, quote, wanted to be the next Hitler, but with people of the LGBT community, end quote. When a person in a position of global power can share these aspects of his beliefs, admittedly to a much lesser extent, and say the following in regards to transgender children, quote, these are young kids. They have enough problems. They don't need to be confused about, what is my gender? You know, what do I want to be called? Am I he, a them, or tree, or a rock? End quote. It's such a condescending and belittling way. How could I have ever felt that my gender identity was anything but just some silly little delusion? How could I express just how much I hated my body without being seen as some crazy child who can't tell what's in their pants? How could I ever, ever have the courage to be? When policy six fifty-one passed, it made the opinions of these people into real tangible policy. It gave people a safe space to hate, and it showed that Arrowhead would support and harbor this hatred. When the two common occurrence of those boys pointing and laughing in the hallways happens, it's Arrowhead pointing and laughing with them. It's Arrowhead laughing at the deluded little child whose parents were decent enough to try and hide away the shame that is being transgendered, despite their kid's best efforts. So I come here every month ritualistically, not for my own sake, because I know that in all reality, I'll graduate with six fifty-one still in the books. I'll see the name plastered across my diploma, the name that I meant to change before six fifty-one. The representation of a crushed dream to be someone different, to be someone who I didn't really hate. I'll walk down the aisle with my name called or with the name called. I'll see my parents in the crowd, and it'll be the happiest day of my life. The happiest day that I wish I could run from and never return to. I give it all just to feel safe in my own skin. I give it all just to not feel crushed day by day, hearing about other people's supportive parents, hearing about how they're comfortable in their own skin, hearing the lack of regret of inaction in their voice. I come here every month, hoping that one day Arrowhead might not point and laugh with those aforementioned boys. I come here every month to speak for the people who aren't able to speak for themselves. I come here to speak for a part of me that wishes things were different. The part of me that can't truly convince myself that my parents loved me, and the part of me that wouldn't wish anything that I'm going through on other people. The part of me that I The part of me that I just hope the school will lose its burdensome and overbearing liaison between parents and the school. The part of me that wants Arrowhead to once again be a safe place away from, uh, less than ideal home lives. I know that most of the board members and I hope my parents and other adults in the area genuinely harbor an ill will towards transgender people and they're trying to do its best and, uh, try and deliver a little time and climate with transgender people at one of the forefronts of discussion. But sometimes doing what you believe is right has unforeseen negative consequences. Consequences like reinforcing the alienation of transgender people and undermining the school's ability to protect children and help them feel comfortable in school. I believe these consequences to heavily outweigh the benefits, if any, and all of policy six fifty-one. For these reasons, I ask the board to consider appealing policy six fifty-one. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. John Harkless.
Thank you. Um, John Harkless, parents of a junior, um, I want to thank you for preserving our conventions for public comment during the regular school board meeting, um, the ability for stakeholders in the community to provide a perspective, share ideas and provide feedback on policies on the consideration and policies that have already passed uh, is important for good governance in our district. And as such, I wish to be on the record again requesting that after the election, the board engage key stakeholders such as students, teachers and parents in evaluating and reconsidering policy three, 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 the educational gag order on CRT, policy three, three, four, the burdensome and unnecessary policy on transparency and policy six five one restricting how students wish to be addressed. And many others in the community remain opposed to these policies and they are part and parcel of what's been inflicting the school experience for our students and teachers. And further to the fantastic presentation from the Wolfshire County Business Alliance. I think removing those policies will go a long way to preparing our kids for, uh, future in the workplace. Problem solving being one key area of focus. Uh, so understanding and training and learning about empathy, diversity, inclusivity, learning to learn and critical thinking and reasoning are absolutely important. And I think getting rid of these other policies will allow those areas of focus to receive more attention. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Laura Brayden.
I have two things. One, um, from the Business, um, Alliance came up. Um, and I liked your question about what, um, Arrowhead could do. Um, I think it's a great opportunity to take partnerships at Arrowhead, um, and the businesses just a little bit further. There is a program at Pewalki called Insight. I know I talked to Sue Kessedon about it, um, probably a year ago. Um, which is a great program that eleventh and twelfth graders at the high school at Pewalki, um, they work in communities, they're working on a marketing plan. Um, I am a coordinator for the Pewalki Food Cantry and I had a group of students last year, they built me a website. They worked on a, a client management tool, they did marketing tools for the food cantry and it was something that they did all year round. So they're doing, they're getting credit in business classes as well as like economics classes. Um, it would be a complete curriculum change. Um, but it is something to look into. I know, um, Pewalki's had it for several years. And other schools have used it as a model, I believe Hamilton. Perhaps, um, it's been a year since I been there talking to them and all that. Um, but there are other high schools that are, um, kind of following their lead with this type of program. Um, I'm not too familiar with DECA, um, but I feel like it might be similar to what DECA does. Um, but it would perhaps be, um, to a greater, a larger group of students, they would be getting credit within the school and working on some of those basic economics classes and things like that that put interest in it. Um, so that was what popped up. The, the reason I came and I wanted to speak, um, I know you're going to talk about your superintendent search and a brief review, I guess, and what I'm hoping is included and maybe you'll speak to this later. Um, I was wondering about the results of the survey that you got from the stakeholders, the staff and the students. Um, and what kind of qualities and things kind of bubbled to the top and that what you all looked at when you did your superintendent search, like what did you vote for? Um, I, I'd be curious to know what was, what came from those and what you took from that in order to find the new superintendent here.
Thank you. Um, Laura, um, if, if you would like to stay, um, I would turn this over to Daryl Benninger. And, um, if you want to.
It's going to come later when I, um, with the
No, we did. We did a presentation and I did a presentation report. The last board meeting or the one before?
Oh, okay, I missed those.
So, we did, um, survey, um, parents of Arrowhead and, but we had them evaluating like about ten different attributes of what would make a great superintendent. And the three that rose to the top were, uh, retaining, recruiting talent, staff, uh, culture was the other one and Adam, I was wondering, could you help me out on the?
I'm trying to pull it up right now.
By no culture and retaining, recruiting and retaining talent for the, um, top two. And there was, the third one was.
Mara, if you'd rather.
Oh, I did send you the presentation, I sent you the survey.
So that was the themes that we found in the survey. And then when Adam did the, uh, focus group discussions with, with the parents, um, parents, community, uh, students and teachers, those three themes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
We'll look it up here.
Thank you, Laura. I'm gonna watch this, I'm sorry. Is it Kiran Rash?
Okay, so I would like to first, so for saying that you're going to bear with me a little bit here, um, I, so I graduated at semester and I walked into the building today having something completely else written. Um, but then I walked in and my hands started shaking. I'm still shaking. Um, just having a hard time right now. Um, so bear with me a little bit here. So I just wrote this throughout the rest of the meeting, um. And like I said again, I had something else written, but I am just as tired of saying the same things over and over again. As I'm sure you guys are tired of hearing the same things over and over again. Um, but ever since I graduated, I've become more true to myself than I ever have been before. And part of the reason I'm so anxious now is because it's been two, three months almost since I left Arrowhead. And I have grown into myself and who I am as a transgender person. And now I have come back here and I have heard all the things my friends have been through in the last three months. And I'm kind of remembering some of the things that happened to me when I was here because of policy six fifty-one and the fact that I'm trans and all of the bullying that I would prefer to not remember. Um, I'll admit that the mental and physical health side of being trans isn't the best. But it is better than it was when I was at Arrowhead. I would take all of the panic attacks and body dysphoria, self-loathing, trust issues and other struggles that people in my community have over the unsafe feeling that I had at Arrowhead High School any day. How are Arrowhead students like me supposed to feel safe in a school that is run by a community that seems to not accept us? I say seems to, not doesn't. After graduating early, I've not only become more myself, but it's also given me a new outside perspective on how closed off and hidden a lot of my friends are at Arrowhead because of policy six fifty-one and the unsafe feeling they have to be themselves, whether it's bullying or fear of just misgendering and mental health problems that could come from it. It's hard. And I would like to give props to all the parents and faculty that have been seeing these students go through this. Because as I said, I was just a student going through this. And I guess during all of that time, it was hard to see as much all of my friends going through the same thing. And now I have become true to myself and I have accepted this and become a better person since then. And now it is very hard to see my friends in this situation now that I'm out of it. And that being said, I am just wondering what happened to this school from when I was, I was a freshman just three, three and a half years ago. And I was the happiest little freshman ever. Um, my, my sister was here, my brother had just graduated a little while ago. And I had heard such great things about this school and I was so happy. I had friends. I wasn't scared to talk to people. I wasn't scared to raise my hand in class, any of the little things that I was terrified to do just three months ago. And I would say that it was hard to live my own life here as an Arrowhead student. But I could even argue that it's even harder to see my friends going through this now that I'm not. These students, my friends, even some of your children, need and deserve to feel safe and supported in their learning environment. And somewhere in the last few years, that was lost. With that, thank you, and I ask you to please reconsider policy six fifty.
Kiran, uh, I wonder if I could just address you quickly for a moment. Um, I'm just wondering, I, I think that you might be in a, a very unique situation now that you are uh, no longer in the school and your, your thoughts of what happened here could be very helpful to us now that there's no possible retribution that could be shown you in any way. Um, is there any way that you'd be willing to, uh, reach out to the board and administration uh, with an email just to let us know some of your situations so we can better understand them and, uh, and discuss them as a group?
Yeah.
I'd appreciate that very much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's great. Uh, last up is, is, uh, end subject.
Thank you. Um, so my initial opening sentence was the, the most important issue I think that the board should, uh, pay attention to, uh, call attention to is I don't see on the agenda of that I'm very concerned about the buildings and grounds situation. Uh, but after listening to the other commentators, I don't think I can say that anymore. And I am very impressed that Arrowhead has had students of this caliber, okay, advocate for themselves and articulate themselves. Um, I'm embarrassing my own high school teacher if I get it wrong. But I think the first commenter quoted Alexander Pope, didn't say it was Pope, but I had it in that thirty years ago, I think. Um, the, the period in spring. Um, so that's, uh, the best, uh, Arrowhead was great. I just saw the, um, so thank you, I hope you're very nice. Um, so, uh, I guess, uh, my point is that, uh, I'm, I'm worried about, uh, some of the issues that I've heard raised over meetings with the maintenance and the physical infrastructure of Arrowhead. I mean, such a sterling reputation. And, uh, my, uh, comments today is I just want to say that I feel concerned that, uh, some other things have, uh, taken away the board's energy and then a distraction of the board. Um, I know the board is dedicated. I know the board is focused. And I think other things like, uh, policy six fifty-one, um, I've spoken before about what I believe is policy three thirty-four about the curriculum transparency and, uh, some of the requirements that I feel like were an extra burden on the teachers. Um, it took away time for other preparation and could do. Um, I think those things that the board has asked for, um, even asking superintendent to, uh, institute it as, uh, as best possible, I remember giving guidance and, you know, you, you know how to do this and please make sure the teachers know that we are just trying to help guide their hands. Uh, but it was still extra. And I think it was something that needed to happen. And it took away from other places I would love the board to call their attention to. And as I said, with physical infrastructure and, uh, uh, those concerns I think are a big deal. And I think, uh, the board may be taking their eye off the ball with some of that. Um, there was a presentation previously, I think about in January about the maintenance building. And I don't remember all the numbers that were thrown around, but it was, uh, like eighty thousand dollars in repairs. And the maintenance building might not be repairable. Really concerning stuff, like the people who keep the rest of the buildings all day, their building is falling down. That's a, a terrible situation for a school that we, we are so good at other things to do. Um, so, uh, please don't take your eye off the ball. Um, I, I would suggest those other policies, uh, let them go. Peel them back and, uh, just refocus on other things. Um, and with the business community presentation, it sounded like there's a lot of emphasis on twenty-first century skills. Um, the need, need for our students to learn soft skills and relational skills to work with those four generations of the workers. Um, and as part of that, I just wanted to give a shout out and kudos to the teachers and the curriculum that Arrowhead has instituted. Um, I believe it was in early February, I was here for six forty-five AM curriculum meeting. And the dedication of the board that early and dedication of the staff I saw that day. I know they're mostly English department staff, um, their presentation on how they selected their books. So to read the curriculum for the tenth grade AP, um, English. Thank you, honors English ten. Um, all the extra work they put in, the literal piles of books they brought in, that they bought with their own money, read on their free time, studied during the summer, just delivered the best for our kids was so impressive. And I think, um, I would like the board to, uh, get out of the way a little bit and give those teachers their head, hire them, you found some amazing staff. Um, and, uh, so it's our luck to continue with excellence. So that's my comments today and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dan.
Big chin on the, I know there was a question about the buildings and grounds that were, you know, not looking at that. Um, that's definitely not true. Uh, we do have monthly buildings and grounds meetings. And it is one of those things that we're working closely with administration, particularly Jeff Gross, Laura and Kevin Lipstah. Looking at, um, ways to maintain our building. Our biggest thing is money. I mean, it is. A lot of the things that we have, it, it doesn't come with a small price tag. So I think the group as a board, I mean, just even in the past year, I've been on the board. Or this is my fifth year. I think in this past year, we've really dug down and looked at the buildings and grounds and looking at the funding, creativity, what we can do to, uh, because definitely, you know, we do need big money. Um, perfect world, we would have a referendum pass and all of our problems would be solved. Hopefully that we, that will happen in the future, but today we don't have that surplus of referendum, so. Um, just rest assured that the board and administration are looking at, you know, everything here to see what we can do to maintain our buildings.
I know there's a loss piece section and loss piece is also trying to attach on it. So obviously it's on the agenda for this day. Can I ask one other question?
Nice.
You mentioned, uh, the maintenance building that is a part of the buildings and ground concern, which there is a plan that's technically being worked on to address that.
Correct.
Daryl will talk about that and, and later. Is there anything else besides that one example?
Um, so I'm just thinking, uh, stuff I heard in the community, there was something with the swimming pool, um, something with electric homes, I mean.
There's a, there's a plan there. Did you address that as well? Anything else?
Um, top of my head, no, but it definitely felt like with the maintenance building, um, and, um, it felt like it was something that, it wasn't a sudden problem. It was something that maybe had crept up and there was plenty of maintenance. And it seemed like some of those things are being addressed as, as a long-term plan. I'm not, I think not anyone in the board set the, you know, when I come to meetings, when I, when I watch the recordings, there's so much time on some things that, that don't give us literally the concrete. As though building repairs and, you know, keeping it safe would be it. So I had also said, uh, in my comments, I've got to verbalize it, digital infrastructure. Um, my own Twitter is always talking about losing signal, uh, they can't access their curriculum documents. You know, the fennel hour or something like that. My whole, I have the PowerPoint, whatever, all the school wifi cups.
Yeah.
And so with all these new Chromebooks, I'm worried that we're going to, we have to make sure that is also locked.
Actually, the Chromebooks will make that easier. Uh, our, um, administrative support that recommended that actually made that very clear and we drilled kind of that down. So I don't see that as a concern. Um, the, the other, other things regarding the, um, plan around the, the maintenance building that had been a, a very, um, I guess it came upon us very quick with multiple layers to address it. And I, I think the board did a fantastic job working with the administration to make sure that that plan actually pivoted based off of the findings that the construction company found as they dug down to make the repair. And I, I wouldn't just, um, take away what you may hear in this meeting as what Daryl said about the buildings and ground. There are hours spent on those topics outside of the once a month main board meeting, drilling down into those details. So I, I'm glad you brought those to awareness. If there's anything else from that building and grounds, um, concerns, um, beyond the pool, beyond the building, please bring us, make us aware and we'll add that to that list. Thank you, girls. Thanks for the emails. I'm Bill Chris Grant. Absolutely.
Uh, so I'd like to just add one other little, um, anecdote here. Uh, so I think there's, there's a lot of misunderstanding. I've, I've noticed it actually in, in some of the, uh, uh, election campaign materials that are out there, uh, focused saying that, you know, we're not focusing on our buildings and grounds or we're not focusing on our curriculum or we're not focusing. But we have five committees. We have policies. But we have five committees. We have policy, we have curriculum, we have buildings and grounds. We have personnel and we have finance. There's five of us, or there's, there's nine of us here. There's two of us at least assigned to each board and to any of those board meetings that you ever come to at six forty-five in the morning. We're almost always all there. So we are not focusing more on one than another. We're a very passionate young board that is excited to do the best for this school and for our kids. Many of us have kids here, and so we have a vested interest. So it's, there, there is a little bit of a misconception that we're focusing on some things and not on others. That's absolutely not true.
Yeah, thank you, Ben. I, I, I think the same thing. I, I think in your presentation. You actually acknowledged pretty much each of the five committees that we all participated. And so clearly, there are a lot of plates in the air, but not only the board, but certainly the whole administrative team. And I think we're really, really gaining ground in how well we're all working together as a pretty well-oiled machine. And, and it is very much all to the same, to the same end, for, for the betterment of kids. So I, I couldn't agree more with what Mr. Parrish just said. That in fact, a great deal of time and energy is devoted to each of those five key areas for the school. Remember what you see. I thank you for your comments. Okay, moving on, we will go to. Consent agenda. And I want to. Thanks everyone on the board for the approval of our consent agenda. And thank everyone for what then becomes their rigor. And taking a look at those items contained in the consent agenda that need to be reviewed and understood prior to the meeting this evening. So with that, I would like to ask for a motion to approve all of the items listed within the consent agenda. I'm taking a motion to approve the consent agenda. Thank you. Any further discussion on that? Any objections to any particular item in the consent agenda?
I think it would be appropriate for us to highlight and thank the people who made donations to us.
Completely agree.
We have a donor, Bechtel Roofing, was given to our school, Strohrig Industries. Bellfields Summit Alliance Club, Staff Up Midwest and TNT Rescue Systems. Thank you for each of you who affiliated to our school and somebody's.
Thank you. So I have a motion. I have a second. Any deeper? Hearing none, we'll go to vote. All in favor of approval of consent agenda as listed, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. First up is curriculum committee with Chair Person.
Okay, I just noticed the date on the curriculum committee meeting minutes, so it's February twenty-second. But the agenda item says February twenty-third. Our date was the twenty-third. So what we did, um, our meeting was very productive. It was another really good meeting. It went the whole time. Sue was very kind and walked us through the entire two thousand and twenty-two state report card for Arrowhead. All the good, the bad and the ugly. So if you would like to just briefly summarize.
I think, you know, the, the impetus behind the meeting was to just get a sense for the areas that are. Reported on and scored in the report card. Some things are reported on as information, some things are scored. I gave a little bit of background and how Arrowhead has performed since the inception of the school report card. We spent some time looking specifically at our English language, language arts, not just achievement. But value-added growth data and we had some conversation and dialogue around. We know that we need to be doing better work in this area and the steps that we're taking to. You know, as Robin indicated, literacy carries our students well beyond high school. So lots of work being done in that regard right now and probably will be thematically for the next two or three years. A lot of curriculum committee time spent on looking at English language arts and reviewing then that. Reviewing the report card data on a regular basis with the, with the board, I think is an important piece. It's always shared. It's always posted. It's always there for the public to review, but I think a deep dive, we didn't go deep, deep dive into the data, into the metrics. But we went kind of sub deep into the various ways that we are measured on that accountability work. And truth be told, those measures, we talked about the assessments that are part of that measurement. We just had the ACT yesterday, statewide ACT yesterday, five hundred and forty juniors minus nine. We're absent, um, taking, you know, taking that assessment one day, one snapshot. Ways that we can help them prepare better, ways that our curriculum can align to those experiences. Because we know that people can seek information in the report card. So taking that time, looking through, answering those questions and helping people understand those metrics, I think was time well spent.
Thank you. So that was really what we spent the entire meeting on, talking about those and focusing on those and concerns about reading. And we'll take it from there and move forward. A future agenda items. Adam Bold will be presenting a proposal for two years of grant money for mental health training.
Every share doc, you know, use the board. The looks on your faces.
Then we got also talked about still, you know, we had, um, the block scheduling that was voted down earlier. Revisiting what kind of. Scheduling do we want going forward? Because it didn't seem like the teachers are happy with what we currently have. But it didn't seem like they wanted to do the block scheduling either. So we're kind of trying to find a happy medium there, I guess. So that'll be a running topic probably as we go forward. So our next meeting is coming up pretty soon, March sixteenth. At six forty-five. Oh, and I forgot to mention, um, at our meeting, Sue handed out these, I don't know if everybody got one. Or not, it's the DPI scores and the, all the score details involved with them.
I have the ones that people didn't have.
And it was linked to my presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairperson. Uh, next up is Chairman Thompson with Finance and Legislation.
Amazing, well, there were several things that we did. One significant thing that we did was we went through. The independent audit by our auditing firm to check through all our financial transactions. And make sure that everything is in order as ought to be. I will say that we are in order as things ought to be. There are no questions of any. Of any concern whatsoever. Thank you to Jeff Gross and Financial Office for. Working together with the next so well and running things so smoothly in the financial office. After that, we had a number of conversations about different things. One was the enrollment projections coming from the elementary schools. The high school, we know from looking at those, what our trends are going to be in terms of that counts. Coming up in the next few years, or for many years, we've had declining enrollment with no end in sight. At this point, we see a little end in sight. There seems to be a gap about four or five years out and then maybe an increase in enrollment coming on. In a few years from now. So that was, uh, welcome, hopefully some welcome relief. Because our state aid is tied to those numbers. Then we discussed a bit about with using Jeff's financial planning model. To help us plan for the current and future year budgets. That conversation was a little bit dismal because the state aid coming from Madison. Is utterly inadequate to run the school and many other schools. Most other schools in our state and we, without getting into the details of why Arrowhead is a bit more. Challenged than others simply because dating back some years, we were kind of shortchanged with a lot of. Anyway, there was a discussion about various scenarios. Jeff has always did a great job of. Showing us various options and different possibilities that may arise based on what the state budget might be. What our roles might be and so forth. It is a very difficult process to do that because. State is in the middle of their deliberations about their current stipying budget. They don't know what they're doing, so we can't really know what we're doing in that regard. So it leaves us with a great deal of uncertainty, which we'll just have to navigate and do the best we can about. So that's, I know you, Jeff, we really could add anything here.
Just one correction. I think you're talking about revenue. Overstating, so revenue windows is the, we can have hard to work with again. Six out of the last eight years, we've been allowing zero increases in the amount of revenue we can have per student to work with. That makes it challenging when you're fighting CPI increases on all your expenditure items. So that's what we're facing up against. We do prevent a maintenance on our facilities and that's why they look as good as they do. But when you don't have millions to replace, you can only do so much PM or prevent a maintenance. And at some point, you're gonna have to replace. It takes fun if you do those things.
Chairperson Better.
Thank you. Um, our last meeting was March the second. And we, Kevin Lipstah talked about kind of like the summer plans. You know, when we, after school's done, we do a lot of remodeling where we can to minimize disruption of the classrooms. The two things that were on the forefront was the fire alarm upgrade at both campuses. Which is a hefty investment, much needed, and also the roofing remodeling project at North Campus. There was a third item of discussion too of the Otto's HVAC remodeling project. It was the initial conversations that we had of talking about some outdated learning spaces as well as. We have six lifts in that Otto's area and just looking in terms of what can we do to. And a lot of them passed their life expectancy and we're just looking for solutions to make that better. It'll be, there'll be futures conversations about that at future committee meetings. Kevin also informed the board that he'll be attending the March thirteenth Village Apartment Board Meeting. To provide information on the water main extension project and receive approval of that report. So basically, it's with the water main us to have access, multiple points of access to the water. Cause if the water shut down, the school shuts down. That good summary. So very important. Other things that came to the forefront too was the. The pool electrical remodel project. Where we were looking at, you know, in terms of timelines, where we're looking to push up that electrical upgrade. Some challenges there. I mean, we're collecting bids as we speak. I think they're due by the end of the month. And once we get those along with the timeline, we'll figure out what's the best solution to get that installed. More to follow on that.
Just a one clear there. What wasn't, wasn't a part of the need to now push up? Is the fact that we are behind in getting the quotes and the plan for that?
It was, um, in terms of the delay of it, I know there was some other buyers to put out. My understanding with, uh, with the maintenance building. With resources there and some other items. Or Jeff, can you, can you speak on it?
And right now is the time where we'd want to do that work. It's the slowest period of time. And as talking with the people that use the pool, it felt like next year this time would be a good time to get that worked out. Seeing that there's no safety danger to users and those care, taking care of the pool.
Good. I, I thought we had had discussion at our original time, was summer of this year.
Originally, we were scheduled for March of this year. That's right now, but that wasn't happening based on what we made, got the approval forward.
So we're getting the bids now and looking at the timeline. Like Kevin said originally, it may be four week, a four week timeline. That's what's estimated, but it's getting back to the bids and also not just looking at the timeline of beginning to end. What is that specific timeline of, there's some stuff that they could do maybe upfront without disruption of the pool. And looking at those timelines, what is that timeframe of disruption? So if it's, you know, hopefully it's a lot less than that. And if so, you know, is there a possibility of doing it sometime like in the year before March of twenty-four? But once I think, once we get the bids, get those timelines for specific timelines.
Yeah, I, I think we should go back and add some comments in the meeting minutes from that meeting that we. Kind of gave the direction to have those timelines published to that new timing. So that we can be accountable to that. I think we should go back and add that in here. Pretty sure that's the direction that we set.
Yeah, I thought we wanted to speed it up because of safety concerns, no matter what, and to go forget what the original plan was.
Right. And I think, um, I know what they were, you know, in terms of what they were saying to was, okay, they've done some solutions. To greatly minimize the risk of the employee.
There's no.
The student or athletes are, it's the underbelly of the pool where there's.
Yeah, again, to, to be clear, there is no safety risk to students. Right. The concerns, the concerns come in. In, in terms of mitigating any concerns for employees or, you know, anything with a. A risk of anything electrical on summer storms and so forth, like we had last year. So it was my understanding as well during the meeting that there was to be something. Solid, I guess, put into the minutes. From our facilities director.
But I don't know that we'll have solid until we have good information and we don't have that yet. So solid implementation times, especially based on those bids, is what I remember.
Yeah.
And I said the venture is trying to move things up, but we were going to determine that once the bids were brought in, maybe what their timeline was.
Right. So why don't you get it done sooner rather than later?
Right. Right. I think that was discussed in the meeting. Is there a possibility of getting it done before the March twenty-four day?
The minutes read, the committee would like to expedite the repairs if possible. Mr. Lipstah will look into changing the timeline once we have reports. So it is in the minutes that, that the committee wants to do this sooner, but we have to wait for the bids. So I don't think that's sufficient.
And Mr. Lipstah said, the, the risk is that the pool will shut down. If the electrical goes bad, the pool will shut down. Once we fix the electrical. The risk is the pool will shut down if the leak gets bigger. You know, and once we fix the leak, the risk is the pool will shut down because the next thing will go. So we have a fifty-year-old pool that we're trying to band-aid together to keep operating.
Yeah, but I think the point that we're making or tried to make, I think in the meeting was finding out in the meeting that timing had slipped. We're, we're asking for a clear timeline to be established to complete the bid package work. And then from approval of bid all the way through construction phase. We want to be able to see that we are now holding ourselves accountable to the timeline set. And I thought that's what we talked about at the very, at the very end of that discussion. Let's document the plan and be accountable to the. And then we'll be accountable to the.
When the timing that slipped was due to the approval to move forward on the project at the board level. The timing when we approved the board, we had the discussions in December.
Uh, it's like August. That's my, that's my big concern with this whole thing is that uh, you know, we had a packed house here. Uh, and the board was on the edge of shutting this pool down, uh not for the safety of the students, but for the safety of the staff. Uh, with this electrical panel and that was in August and nothing's been touched till now, I'm, I'm just kind of flabbergasted. I was flabbergasted in that meeting, I didn't know how to approach it, but I think that we need to have a different. Uh, time and action uh approach to things like this that are of, in my opinion, the utmost urgency. Uh, I, I think that Mister Lipscan, I, I, I mean, I know that uh, you know, we're a group of nine, but the fact that that was not. Communicated to us and that nothing was touched for six months, un- unless I missed something seems wrong to me. Unless I, I, it might, I don't mind, am I, okay, tell me what I'm missing.
I don't know exactly what you're missing, but you're missing something, so maybe we need to get together, have a discussion with Kevin and I.
That would be, that would be fantastic, yeah, cause I mean, and then the other piece that was concerning for me at that meeting was uh, we had a, a, a. Board member uh Evers who's a works in this field and, and suggested uh an arc curtain. Um, and uh, you know, uh, Kevin had decided uh either with administration or on his own that that wasn't necessary, but I. As far as I know, that was never communicated back to the board. I was kind of concerned to know that, that, you know, at that meeting, you know, I brought it up and he said, well, we decided that that wasn't a good investment. So I, I don't know, I just think that there is, there seems to be a communication problem somewhere.
I would, I would jump in and say, there are points in time where we get recommendations or suggestions from nine separate board members. And it isn't discussed as a board, there isn't a consensus as a board. We're going to make the decision to spend twenty thousand dollars on. Arc prevention curtains, I don't know the correct terminology. The suggestion is made by one board member, uh Kevin Lipscomb five, finished. Followed up on that, looked into costing, looked at what we even have in our uh welding stations. Learned about different models and. In consultation with the, our own electrician who does the work. Felt like that wasn't worth the money and the way they have it all blocked off made the electrician feel very comfortable. Now had the board reached consensus as a whole, we want you to spend that money. Then that's what we would have done, but when it's individual board members giving suggestions. Maybe we do our due diligence, sounded like a great suggestion, and then they looked into it and made a decision for it. It seemed like an operational kind of decision that would be in the realm of Kevin Lipscomb's director of Buildings and Grounds. Our motivation.
Yeah, so I, I made a suggestion twice, uh once in a meeting, and once with a tour of that lawyer is a way to remedy. Concern of our flash from that. Our flash curtains aren't twelve thousand dollars, they're a few hundred dollars and they're widely used in industry to protect people. While working in a panel that is still hot, that has our flash potential. Very, very easy way to still safeguard the area.
And that number, just to be clear, I'm just talking.
That's right, but there, there are two hundred dollars, it shouldn't be an excuse, something which you possibly to use there. But anyway, I, I just think we need to have some very clear documentation on a path forward, so that.
So once we get the bids, we'll have the iron game plan.
Alright, we can't develop a timeline now, if we could develop it and say, it'll be done in August, and then we get back the company saying the first weekend touch it is. November.
Yeah, I think the gap or the miss was having a timeline to get to the phase of. I think that was the gap, but I. For August.
No, I do believe that in August was when a lot of parents keen to talk about the pool. But the committee or, or the um B and G report that day said. It's mostly comments about the benefits of the swimming pool, a proposal was made to create a committee to focus on the pool and how to generate funding. Um, then they talked about transportation and shutting down the pool and going for diving somewhere else. But there's really nothing mentioned about, you know, the electrical issue or concerns of that, I don't think it popped up in this one.
No, I think it popped up on the tours when we were as a group and then when we went back to the board, uh boardroom as a committee. But I.
So good, Gerald, the bids are through that one.
I thought it was the thirty first of March.
Yeah, they're very soon, um, I don't remember exact, exact date.
Right, so once he has that, they've evaluated, so uh normally our. Buildings and grounds weeds is the first Thursday of every month, so I know um. Kevin's actually out that during that timeout of district, so we will be scheduling it uh. Later in the month, uh I just have to look at other committees and see what dates open. Ideally not this day, night after the fourth, so. That's all I have for Buildings and Grounds and then also we will be putting in a, a student presentation. Where uh students have the opportunity to, I think, reach out to board or administration on ideas that they have. An idea for something to enhance our buildings and grounds of structure, so. So we have, sorry, can I?
So we went ahead to September and the Buildings and Grounds report from then goes back to August. Um, and so the committee sure the pool quotes are currently being collected for future electrical work.
That's where my concern was, I mean, we, we felt as, at least I as an individual board over felt an urgency at that time. Uh, and I was under the impression as an individual board over that that was being addressed and being collected at that time. So I was kind of concerned that six months later, we don't even have anything started with this.
I know there's a lot of other projects.
I, I mean, I, I realize he's not doing, he's not sitting there, you know, whittling thumbs, I know he's a very busy guy, I just think that that. You know, rises to a level that's maybe above all the others, because of the safety issue of that was, well, or at least close to that. I know there's a lot of issues. So any result, I think we'll, we'll have more of a baked up man after big collection and. Of evaluating those vendors, so uh. We'll have a meeting probably in the first half of, of people.
Uh, moving on to uh Chairperson Linder with personnel.
Uh, so no report just to our closed session on February fifth, to say that. Sort of the heavy lifting and the preparation of just the superintendent. I did want to take a few minutes tonight just to thank everyone who had a hand in the process of. Uh, identifying a candidate pool and selecting interviewees and then pushing ahead with. Uh, the interview and selection process, I think the first person I want to thank is Laura Meyer. Handle this report class and, you know, came to us, said, you know, I realize this is. New information and you're trying to figure out a plan forward, but it's January and if we don't get going now. We're gonna be behind the April and I felt like we, you know. Went as efficiently as we could, Laura had a posting prepared and with her with the moment she was telling us in January. That we needed to get off our chairs and start getting something done, and so by Friday of uh that week it was posted. But the uh deadline of February tenth for uh applications to be received. So I mean, the greatest moment experience that you've had on this board with regard to hiring superintendents is that. Craig Thompson, I have been through it once and mostly sat and watched other people do the course, so we all did a lot of learning together. The people in addition to Laura who also developed a job description, which, you know. She knows what she's done for the last eight years, but to put it down on a piece of paper that lets somebody else. Realize what their priorities are is also, you know, a huge effort, I'm thankful for that. Um, we leaned heavily on Adam Kurt's process, uh, he. Was the voice of administration in most meetings where the board was trying to figure out what to do and what not to do. And uh guided us effectively and I think um. Tried to stay out of our way except for we were stepping on our own feet, um and I know that Sue Casetta. Worked a lot on this and didn't wind up in front of the board a lot of times with the stuff that. Uh, she'd been doing the heavy lifting and I know in particular the process of developing. Interview questions and trying to assign those questions effectively to three different interview panels that were operating were all. Fell ultimately on Sue, and so thank you. Jeff, uh Gross and Ryan Mandon did the initial screening of the candidates that we. Intended to bring forward and collected data and opinions that were valued by the boards for this process. Jeff also worked hard on a Sunday after we selected our uh new superintendent. To put together a contract and. At amazing records speed with the participation of our president, Kim would have an agreement. In principle, uh on that contract within twenty four hours of, of making our selection and we had signed. But in forty eight hours, which was true, and I know Jeff wound up. Putting some weekend work in followed by a full in each Monday right up until the time the board met that. Adam Bolt was present and the voice of one of our committees as we. Review the findings of our interview committees and I want to thank you for the time that you've spent uh on interview day. In particular, I have to say I am most appreciative of our board to go. And we broke up into work groups only because it made sense that if none of us knew a lot about what we were doing. Maybe if we took a piece of it, we might be able to learn that piece and. I have to say that was kind of a total crap shoot, which I think scared the hell out of administration. But is, but I think it worked very well and it worked well in that we have a lot of very smart people. Who are curious and diligent and did some terrific things. Uh, Daryl Benneker and with the help of Donna Smith uh put together the survey and then evaluated the results of the survey. And then evaluated whether the evaluation was undermined by having. Overly interested community members, which I think is a wonderful problem to have. Uh, and so thank you very much, that was true. The survey work was followed up on by uh Adam Kurt primarily, but with the support of other administration. And putting together a focus group and running it effectively and we've heard comments tonight about that, I won't go into it further, but. Both the survey and the focus group really developed a pattern of reaching out and looking for insight from our smart. Parents and community members and our staff. Uh, and hopefully taking some of their good judgments and bringing it to the table at the time of dinner. When Laura completed her preparation of her job description as it has existed. Uh, over the course of her eight years at Arrowhead, uh Lynn Vogel ends and Chris Ferris. Picked up the ball at that point and uh helped develop a vision of what that job will look like for the years to come. Uh, they were creative and thoughtful and when they felt like they had a product that was worth sharing, they sat down with Adam. And administration and worked through what parts that were practical and what parts weren't, and I think we wound up getting the best. Overall to that, so thank you very much for your time. We had assigned the um. Process of setting a budget for incoming uh superintendent's compensation and benefits. With Craig Thompson and Tim Evers and. That work was done and it resulted in some very creative thinking on how to set goals and. Tie compensation to goals and what's practical and when this, that can be implemented. And with all those creative thoughts coming together with hard dollars attached to them. It made it very easy to take and pull a contract together. In twenty four hours after candidate selection, so thank you two very much for. Jeff, they had a significant role in that as well, getting the hard dollars. I, well, let's put it this way, we can try and spend them, but it's never happening without Jeff. Uh, the part that I have to say was among the most interesting for me was sitting and observing. Uh, involved discussion between Brandon and Tim Evers both uh the interview questions, because. Sue in particular, but with Adam Kurt at her side had come in with a bunch of questions and. There were uh a lot that were put on the table and we talked thematically about the area that we wanted to. Cover and specifically about the types of questions that will list. Useful information and it was totally outside my field and so. I was amazed at how quickly in about an hour that all came together in a way that. Sue, I'm sure with many hours after that, put together a, an excellent. Set of questions for each of the three panels that we were uh running our candidates through for interview process and so thank all of you for. The amount of time and effort that was put into that. I would say this, that our President Kim uh was ever present in these. Various work groups and she, I, I made the list and the timeline and the flowchart that uh was. Used in a, as an honorary designation, put Kim on every single work group and every committee. And I told her that was honorary and she took it quite literally, and so. Uh, Kim, I think, I think your. Total involvement with this kept. Everything sort of moving in the same direction all simultaneously and it was based on everything together at that moment. The interviews that occurred that Saturday, February eighteenth were choreographed in a way that was remarkable. We had candidates coming in and arriving at different uh interview panels and. At a break for every candidate so that they'd be touring the school and having a conversation with students. And I don't think the candidates had any idea how literally we took the comments of the students when they had a chance to report out. Yeah, uh, I think had they understood that they were going to be the first reporters. That some of our candidates might have been more, a little more careful. And so I felt like we got frank information from every panel and every individual that had. Contact with our candidates and that I, I think it's fair to say that in addition to the three panels that were. Existed formally, there were two panels that existed informally and all of that came together and it was obvious. That there was. A consensus candidate and uh so we selected our new superintendent, Mr. Conrad. And. I felt like it was an excellent decision-making process and I was very, very, very happy to see. That at the first ballot, without a lot of jawing or towards creating or anything else, it was a unanimous vote. So it makes me very optimistic that the process was excellent, the selection was excellent and what Arrowhead. Uh, has in store for it, I think will be excellent as well, so thank you all. Thank you for an excellent report.
And I, and I would add, I, that Tim uh was ever, ever present on, on every single basket for this. Okay, his guys, um, really, it made the process what it was. Delivered the outcomes, so thank you. Uh, the only other thing that, that I would add, I think it's important. This oftentimes when a school particularly our size has need for new leadership. This was typically or often go hire a superintendent search firm. And those firms can deliver soup to nuts. Sometimes you would carve out select certain items that you'd like them to do. Other times other schools will invest easy. And the cost of that service can often run thirty to forty thousand dollars. And our team, board administration, student senate, members of the public, our staff, everybody came together and completed this process so that there was no burden placed on taxpayers. I think that's what really important. Thank you, everyone.
But I know, can I add one thing?
Please.
I know, I know Mr. Langer said it, but that Laura really kicked us in here, the outcome of the difference.
Ending so tough.
And her kind of putting us up to the task to be so quick and get that first posting out. It would have been a different outcome. So again,
I'll kick your out anytime. Thank you.
May I add to that too, also that thank you to Laura that she notified us of her intentions officially as early as mid-December. And had she waited until, say, now, the candidate pool may have been quite weakened and you wouldn't have the opportunities regardless of how well its process was and the variety of people out there. Because there aren't a lot of people out there. So thank you.
And everything Mr. Langer explained through the entire process, I've been involved in hundreds of interviews and none of them gone as smooth as this. And it's, it's a set apart of planning, planning this out for this one hour, the entire.
And now we see Chuvaya. It really lasts, it really spell. And thank you, Senator. Okay, um, moving on to Chairperson Ferris with policies.
Great. Thank you, Madam President. She was. So we had our policy meeting and on February 28th, six forty-five in the morning, we started off, we kicked off the meeting basically for the as a, as a courtesy to at least one community member who had many questions on a continual basis about our policy six forty-nine with regard to possession or personal wireless electronic devices. We, I'd like to, you know, extend a great thanks for the extra work above and beyond that our administration did, especially our superintendent Laura. For Jeff, all of his hard work on this to help to, and also greatly to Donna to, for all the hard work that they did above and beyond the call of duty to help to ease the understanding and help our community really, really know where we're coming from, be as transparent as possible. They reached out to the DPI again, as well as legal counsel to make sure that all of our eyes are dotted, all of our teeth are crossed, that we're above board legally on this. We basically spelled out that for those, for students that are underprivileged financially, they will be able to have a Chromebook for use. It will be added to their tab, but it will be taken off once they return the Chromebook at the end of its use. There are, will, there will be Chromebooks in the library that will be, it'll, there'll be a limited number, but there will be Chromebooks in the library to be checked out if necessary. And for those families that either deny making payments or, or there's a Chromebook that's not in working order. This is going to, this policy is going to do a great deal of good. And it's hard to summarize it with just a few points, but the one of, one of the points is as Chairperson Langer has brought up many times, and we're going to add at least two days of extra instructional time for our students, which is always a huge advantage. We're going to be able to control the machines enough to be able to keep from, to keep the kids from playing video games because we'll be able to control that. I, I know firsthand because I have three kids here that a lot of kids play video games on a pretty regular basis on their, on their laptops. There's going to be a lot of features that are going to, they're going to basically increase the academic learning that's going to come from this type of program. And we really put Donna through the wringer with our questions. So I, I thank you greatly for her, her final explanations of, of everything, all the way up to and including the morning of our meeting. So we worked through that. We started there. We also, Mr. Langer also noted that this does not include cell phones. It's, it was a little ambiguous because early in six forty-nine with regards to personal electronic devices that this is not. This does not supersede in any way our current stance on, on cell phones. This is just with regards to laptops. Let's see, moving forward, we also for the, we wanted to try to wrap up an entire look at our policies. We try to do this every year and wrap up looking at every single aspect of our policies within a year. So Katie and Laura had worked on some minor changes to several policies. They're all listed here. Anybody can take a look at what they're all about. If you're interested, policy three sixty-five, alternative education programs, policy four ten, co-curricular policy statement, policy four thirty, student contest, policy forty, four sixty-one point one, coaches handbook, policy six fourteen, elementary student enrollment, policy six fifteen, reinstatement of resident students, policy six forty-two, student conduct, policy seven twelve, staff benefits, policy seven seventeen, staff solicitations, policy eight fifty-one, sponsorships, policy one twenty-one, policy development. So these are all very minor changes. Basically to keep us up to date with the things that may have been antiquated, removed, changed with very minor wording or basically stricken in some way. Those will be talked about in a minute for the idea of discussion and action. And then finally, the, the board ended the meeting with some time to spare and talking about one fifty-one point four public participation at board meetings. As a consensus, the board agreed that at this time that it's best to leave things as they stand, see how things wash out as we move forward. If there continues to be concerns, we can readdress this and look at it again in the future. But at this time, this is tabled indefinitely. And no, no changes will be made to policy one fifty-one point four. So that was our meeting.
Thank you so much, Chairperson Ferris. So with that, you're going to go through the whole list and and go for motions and approvals for the following policies. Policy three sixty-five, alternative education programs. Do I have a motion to for adoption?
Adapted present.
All second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The second is policy four ten, co-curricular policy statement.
Okay, adapt as presented.
All second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Policy four thirty, student contests.
Well, good, that is presented.
All second.
Nobody's going to mess with Doc.
All in favor.
Aye.
Propose. Policy four sixty-one point one, coaches and what?
Adapted present.
All second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. She carries. Policy six one four, elementary students enrollment.
Well, good, that is presented.
Second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. She carries. Policy six one five, reinstatement of resident students.
Well, good, that is presented.
All second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Policy six four two, student conduct.
Well, good, that is presented.
All second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Policy seven one two, staff benefits.
Well, good, that is presented.
All second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Policy seven one seven, staff mutations.
Well, good, that is presented.
All second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Policy one twenty-one, policy development.
Oh, this one I want to thank.
I'll move to. Policy one twenty-one.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Our next meeting date is April sixth. Bob, I hope you make a meme out of this. This is, this is good stuff right here.
Thank you very much, everyone.
I, I think we should note though, just because we made a little flight of it for everyone, that all of the discussions that place in the policy meeting and it goes through all of this in detail so that we wouldn't do it here. So that's, that's why it was so quick.
Moving on to other reports, there is nothing to report at this time, but was there anything this ever is from yourself?
None at this time.
Moving on to new business. There's nothing there. Future agenda items?
So I actually had two future agenda items that were brought up tonight. One of them was brought up by Mr. Evers, the idea of having Robin into our curriculum meeting, inviting her in to see how we can be the driver for the next stage of AI or whatever it is that we can be the leader again. And to see what, what it takes to make that happen. And then another, and these don't happen, I know that you guys like have a lot going on.
I haven't written down.
Oh, you do. Oh, perfect. My other thought was just the idea from Laura Brayden on insight. We could look more into that. You had that too. Perfect. Okay, never mind. We're good.
I would say let's not limit it to AI. There's, there's more than just that. As well as your comment on Arrowhead manufacturing and the fact that other schools have now copied that and can deliver something similar. Let's take a step back and look at, all right, let's innovate Arrowhead manufacturing again, then be the leader of that again, that other schools are now going to have to copy years down the road. So it's, it's that as well.
I'm not sure if this was an appropriate time for this comment, but I, I know that four of the five candidates for school board are present. I have received a solicitation from the workshop Freeman of a series of questions asking my positions on those. I suspect everybody else has got the same questionnaire. One of the questions in that questionnaire is what is the biggest problem that you see confronting Arrowhead High School? And I think it might make a statement for our public if every single candidate for the Arrowhead School Board started that answer with the word money. Period. And maybe ended whatever they have to say in between with something about a referendum was necessary.
Maybe add something different to that. I don't want to put words in Jeff Gross's mouth, but I, I think the state funding, you can't just leave it at money. It's got to be the equation that is used to get state funding to the school. But if you leave it at money, then it will just be incumbent on, the only solution is referendum. There's still another solution. That's, that's, that's redefining how state funding is allocated to all schools. And that's where we drew the short straw years ago. So.
Yeah, the revenue caps have been stifling us.
Yes.
Holding money. That could imply Arrowhead's been spending frivolously and we don't have anything left. And that is so false. So you don't want misperceptions.
I, I think I agree with where you're headed. Let's just tweak, tweak the messaging to be more deliberate to because that could get at that. We, we need state legislators to do an evaluation to correct it. It can't all be put on the backs of taxpayers.
So I, I would say this, that my version of this, I was committed a hundred words. I have a hundred words. I, but I, I think the I think all of that is correct in that there's a lot of space in between money and referendum to express those points. But I, I think our, we need to start the drumbeat right now, or maybe we would have already started that drumbeat that we, we've got problems that only money is going to solve. And our public needs to know that. And all five candidates for the Arrowhead School Board were consistent with that theme and the biggest problem. I'm sure maybe that starts that whole. Thank you. But I agree. And I've got several other thoughts, but I think everybody does so.
Yeah, but it's done how you suggest. I could make, we could make a powerful that could be very powerful in the Freeman, or it could also be something that they then decide to stay away from and publishing it all. But I think it's a great opportunity.
Okay, any other future agenda? If not, do I have a motion adjourned?
So, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Correct.
Yeah, it's like the whole messer. Well.
Yeah.
Yeah.